Order tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education at September 28th, 2021. Roll call please.
Ms. Hoover?
Here.
Mr. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Conover? Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Ms. Steckety?
Here.
Ms. Coyle?
Here.
Mr. Avia?
Here.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, and to review closed session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Board is back from closed session. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the September 14th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the September 16th, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Just going to start with some guidelines. Public comment is a time for the community to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. Once you've been notified of your time is up, please step away from the podium. Public comment will be for 30 minutes with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand this is not a time of engagement. The board will consider your comments in its decisions. For those comments and questions requiring a follow-up response, the board president or superintendent will follow up. Are there any public comments? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the 2021-2022 budget. The President of the Board of Education calls the public hearing to order regarding the proposed 2021-2022 budget. I believe, Kim, you have a presentation?
I would like to present the 2021 final budget this evening. So first, we'll start out with looking at our revenues by source. So for all funds, our total revenues are $31.6 million. Property taxes are $25.7 million. And then in the operating funds, our total revenues are $29.6 million. And property tax is the largest component. At 82, at 24 million or 82%. The operating funds are comprised of the education fund, the operation and maintenance fund, IMR of Social Security, transportation, TORT, and TORT funds. So here you can see pictorially where we're at. Also, one of the things that has changed this year, our revenues, federal funds comprise a greater percentage of our operating revenues because of the federal grants, the additional federal grant money that we received. And the same with offer-all funds. So our tax levy is based on 2.3% for the 2020 levy and 1.4% for the 2021 levy. The collection rate overall has remained the same, but the manner in which we collect our taxes, how much comes before June 30th and how much comes after June 30th, has changed over the last several years. So it makes the revenues a little bit more difficult to predict of actually how much we're going to receive in which part of the year. Federal revenue percentages, as I said before, increased because of SRR2 funding, so $458,000 of SRR2 funding, and we're expecting $1.2 million of SRR3 funding. And interest income is at near zero for this year. Rates are near zero, and so it's really a negligible revenue source for this year. Our grant funding is at preliminary FY22 levels. We will be receiving potentially additional funding for some of our grants, and then carryover amounts will come later, probably in the next month or so. Our evidence-based funding is $1.3 million, which is only about $1,500 more than it was last year. And the CPPRT revenue did increase based on estimates from the state. One of the other things, I did increase our revenue in the ed fund by $40,000 based on some reimbursement that we should receive for our room and board tuition students that we have. And then in the transportation fund, the revenue continues to be prorated by the state. Our revenues are decreased for FY22 because they're based on expenditures from FY21, and that has not been finalized. We should get that information sometime in mid-November. Food service revenue is consistent with FY22, but the source of the revenue has changed. We're not receiving National School Lunch Program revenue. We're receiving revenue from the Seamless Summer option, and all our students can eat breakfast and lunch free of charge. And then we are anticipating that we will issue working cash bonds this year, but that revenue has not been included. When we look at our expenditures by object, again, salaries and benefits are the biggest component, whether it's all funds or our operating funds. Total revenues in all funds is 34.6 million, expenditures is $34.6 million, and in the operating funds, $31.9 million. And so you can see when we look at the operating funds, salaries are 58.4%, and the benefits, And then again, for all funds, salaries are the biggest component with purchase services, benefits, purchase services, and then our outplace tuition are significant expenditures as well. So the salaries reflect the cost of the new WTA contract and the anticipated salaries for Wesba that we just settled recently. Administrative and all non-union staff with increases similar to the WTA will be finalizing those hopefully over the next month. And then estimated retro pay is also included. Salaries for the WCMA are per the contract. We've budgeted medical insurance at one half of the year at current rates, and then the other half of the year with a 5% increase. In the O&M fund, we included contingencies for, it includes spending for maintenance and repairs. We also have some minor masonry work at South, some roof repairs, our remaining life safety projects. And we also, in this budget, included the transfer of $2 million from the O&M fund to the capital projects fund for the HVAC replacement at the junior high, and then any other building projects depending upon what our working cash bond issuance looks like. We also have $600,000 coming from the SRR grants for that. And our capital projects fund include the capital projects to utilize remaining working cash bond funds, and we'll be transferring funds from the working cash fund. We did put in contingencies in the budget in the ed fund of $350,000. $250,000 of that is in case we start incurring expenditures for the Hackbrush donation. That's a little over $250,000. And then just a little bit of miscellaneous, there's still unknowns related to COVID in case of, you know, if we need any additional staffing. There are other staffing transitions that will be taking place, and so that helps us in case there's some unanticipated expenses. We also added $100,000 in the O&M fund for the same reason, and then in the IMR of Social Security funds, $4,000 each in those, again, because of any potential staffing changes. Our building budgets remain at the FY22 levels, and other supply material accounts were not increased in the ed fund. Private placement and tuition costs increased based on the anticipated cost increases and additional placements. So that was an additional 300,000, little over $300,000 that we increased our expenditures based on some of the student services information that I received. And then the Fire Prevention and Safety Fund includes expenditures for some of the items on the life safety survey, and the final costs associated with the plumbing projects related to the school maintenance project grant. And then additional funding will be needed to complete all the And then additional funding will be needed to complete all the life safety projects and Joe is working on those. And then in terms of our revenue expenditure summary, um, revenues, um, in the operating funds are twenty-nine point six million dollars, expenditures thirty-one point nine. So our surplus or deficit with the contingencies included is two point, a deficit of two point three million dollars. Without the contingencies, one point eight, um, one point eight million dollars. Now, we do have sufficient surplus to accommodate those and, um, some of the things, uh, the one fund that we really need to watch is the ed fund. Um, and we have surpluses this year because, um, we, we had deficit, we had surpluses at the end of FY twenty-one because of COVID. And so, um, we did not have some of the same expenditures that we typically have, like in the transportation fund. Even our ed fund with, um, students being remote for a good part of the year, um, building budgets, uh, there was a lot of money left in building budgets and things like that. So, um, but we will be looking especially at the ed fund as we go through, um, the process, the five-year plan and the process for next year to make some changes. And then, um, the restricted funds are shown there as well. Then the other, uh, piece that we need to do, we have to talk about our evidence-based funding as part of the budget presentation. So again, one point three, um, two-seven million this year. We got one point three two-five million last year. And, um, the state allocates the resources for low-income students. They tell, uh, they allocate resources for English learners, for special education. And then there's three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of funds not specifically allocated to the district. So, um, we will utilize that funding to employ licensed educators to provide instruction for our students, provide educator professional development, um, purchase curriculum and learning tools, expand, uh, purchase and expand programs, provide parent and family community engagement activities, invest in innovative programming, and then evaluate those programs. We achieve student growth in the following ways. We provide instructional services and materials for English learners. We have increased time and attention on specific populations, improve programs, curriculum and/or learning tools, and increase the number and quality of community, parent and family engagement opportunities. And then, we also, as part of the exercise for our evidence-based funding, um, identify the goal is the goals that we have achieved. So the district, uh, meets these goals. All kindergarteners are assessed for readiness. All students are supported by highly prepared and effective teachers and school leaders. Every school offers a safe and healthy learning environment for all students. Ninety percent or more of ninth grade students are on track to graduate with their cohort. And ninety percent or more of students graduate from high school ready for college and career. And then we're still working on these goals of ninety percent of third grade students are reading at or above grade level and ninety percent or more of fifth grade students meet or exceed expectations in math. So our key considerations, um, our revenue projections are conservative. Uh, life safety and working cash fund spending for capital projects and life safety products. Funds can only be used for those purposes. And so when you see deficits there, it's because we have certain income. We're not getting more revenue. We've got that revenue and we spend it over time, so that is not something to be, um, worried about. And the education fund, again, it reflects our fund balance, reflects the two hundred and fifty thousand eight ninety-four from the Hackbrush donation that can only be spent on educational items for the high school. No salaries, no benefits. The O and M fund balance reflects three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, um, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars of TIF funds that can only be spent for improvements at Manning. So we always have to be cognizant that we have that money tucked away. And then, um, the property tax freeze legislation is still pending. Pension reform legislation is still pending. And so if either of those things, um, come to fruition, the district would need to really reevaluate where we are with our budget and how we're, uh, what we're doing with our spending. Um, obviously, the state of Illinois finances continue to be in turmoil and that could impact future funding. Um, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget is aligned with Board and District goals to provide educational services to the students and families we serve. And fund balance ratios for the ed and TORT fund do not meet, um, District guidelines of forty-five percent. Um, the TORT fund, that's okay because again, we can't have large balances in there and it's only for very specific items that we can spend money on in the TORT fund. Uh, the education fund is one of the things that, um, we will be reviewing with the Finance Committee as we go forward. And that, um, the ed fund balance is forty-one percent without contingencies and thirty-nine percent with. Overall, our operating funds, we do meet, um, the guideline. Overall, we have forty-eight percent, um, without contingencies and forty-six with contingencies. Our fund balances did change a little bit too because we're taking that two million dollars out of the O and M and moving it to capital projects for that HVAC, for the HVAC at the junior high. So, does anybody have questions?
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
The President asks if there are additional, additional comments from the members of the Board of Education regarding the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. The President asks if there are any public comments concerning the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. The President then declares that the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget is closed. Okay, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations, John Jonak, interim Director of Student Services. Amy Quatron, interim Westmont Junior High School Principal. Stuart Allard, long-term sub, Westmont Junior High School Science. Joe Meisner, Westmont Junior High School Chess Coach. And then there's a non-renewal of a coach. Um, number two, approval of the September twenty twenty-one expenditure report. And number three, ratification of the August twenty twenty-one regular payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is items for information and discussion. Student recognition is first.
Uh, each year, the schools put together dates when they're having, um, recognition programs at their schools. And then Board members can sign up to be the Board representative at those programs. And so I'll be sending these around to both sides of the board table. And if there is a particular event you'd like to represent the Board at, just sign your name. Uh, typically for the graduations, if a Board member has an eighth grader or a senior, um, they're one of the people that are, that will usually sign up for that to help distribute diplomas. And I, Gina, do you have a?
Yes. Yes.
I don't think we have any seniors, so, um, the junior high graduation is on here, Gina. So I'll pass these around and, and then, uh, we'll collect those and then Shannon will put it all together and share those dates with the schools and with the Board members.
Is that it on student recognition, Kim?
Yep.
Okay. And then we have the presentation of monthly financial statements.
This evening, we both have both the July and August financial statements. So during the month of July, the district received three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the state. Um, there's twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-two payments, uh, fiscal twenty-two voucher, nothing vouchered for FY twenty, or twenty-one was vouchered, nothing vouchered in FY twenty-two. Um, we did receive one installment of the twenty twenty tax levy in the amount of a little over one million dollars. Total property taxes collected at the end of July were thirteen point five million dollars, which is, uh, thr- fifty-three point one seven percent. And that is comparable to the prior two years. Um, in the ed and TORT funds, revenues were higher than the prior year average. Um, it's a result of the variability of property tax receipts over the past few years and a large distribution of corporate personal property replacement taxes during the month. Um, we received two hundred and three thousand dollars of FY twenty-one payments and, um, there's, uh, FY twenty-one and tw- no twenty-two payments vouchered in the ed fund. In the O and M and life safety funds, um, they're higher than the prior year average. Um, this is the result of receipt of, uh, six thousand dollars of impact fees, um, which was significantly more than budgeted. And with that, it get a little bit, can make a big difference, um, when we look at the life sa- safety with the impact fund. Transportation fund, revenues in this fund fluctuate from year to year based on the timing of state payments. Um, we received a hundred and sixty-one thousand, uh, four twenty-nine of FY twenty-one payments and there are no FY twenty-two payments vouchered yet. In the ed and TORT funds, expenditures were lower than the prior year average, both with and without contingencies. And this is a result of salary increases not yet paid for FY twenty-two or retro paid for FY twenty-one, as well as a large amount of grant funds remaining for S R two. So, as we talked about in the budget, we have a lot of expenditures budgeted for our S R grants, but we haven't spent that money yet. So expenditures will be lower on a percentage-wise basis. In the O and M fund, expenditures in these fund vary from year to year. Um, we were five point five-two percent to date with contingencies and five point three-three percent, um, with contingencies. And then the O and M, three point six-two spent to date last year without contingencies and three point four-three spent with contingencies. In the transportation fund, and, uh, expenditures are comparable to the prior year averages. And no payments were made, um, during the month. And again, spending comparisons will be very skewed because of the COVID nineteen, um, shutdown during FY twenty and FY twenty-one. So it makes comparisons really difficult year over year. And then, um, the investments and fund balance reports, um, are attached as well as student activities. Um, at the end of July, we had, um, eighteen point nine million dollars of investments. Any questions on July? Alright, for, um, August, we received a hundred and twenty-nine thousand from the state during the month of August. Um, there's eight thousand of FY twenty-one payments vouchered, no FY twenty-two payments vouchered. Um, we did receive two installments of the twenty twenty tax levy totaling two point eight million dollars. Total property taxes collected to date, a little over sixteen million dollars, which represents a sixteen, or sixty-four point five-three percent collection rate. So the last two years was sixty-one point nine and then seventy point three-two. So you can see the variability in how we're collecting, um, property taxes. In the ed and TORT funds, revenues were slightly lower than the prior year average. And this is a result, again, of the variability of the property tax receipts over the past few years. Um, we received eight thousand dollars of FY twenty-one payments and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of FY twenty-two evidence-based funding. Um, in the O and M fund, again, receipts vary from year to year and again, based on the property tax variances. Um, in the transportation fund, revenues fluctuate from year to year based on the timing of state payments and the receipt of property taxes. And so though, both of those, um, have varied over the past several years. There are no FY twenty-two payments vouchered yet. Expenditures in the TORT and ed funds are lower than the prior year averages, both with and without contingencies. And again, this is a result of salary increases not paid yet in August, um, retro pay for twenty, FY twenty-one not paid, and then a large amount of grant, um, funds remaining. In the O and M fund, again, varies year over year. It's eleven point four-seven sp- percent spent to date without contingencies and eleven point oh-nine percent spent with. And last year, it was ten point two-four and nine point seven-four spent. Um, and then again, in the transportation fund expenditures, they're, um, comparable to the prior year averages and, um, they again, will be skewed as we move through the year based on the COVID, uh, nineteen shutdown over the past, um, year and a half. And then, again, um, the fund balances are attached, the investments are attached as well and, um, student activity balances. Does anyone have questions?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the ISBE Salary Compensation Report.
Okay, so, um, each year, we are required to present the ISBE Salary and Compensation Report, um, to the Board. And so that is attached. It shows, um, all of the contract, the base salaries for all of our, um, teaching and administrative staff, as well as any vacation days, sick days, um, bonuses. And the bonuses are longevity payments, um, for the teachers. Um, and then retirement enhancements, so that's like the Board paid, um, TRS. And then other benefits are your insurances. Does anyone have questions on that?
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the next item is the presentation of the IMRF Salary Compensation Report.
And this report, um, again, is a required report, um, that, uh, outlines any IRF, IMRF employees and their compensation, um, for the year. And, so it has the different staff whose salary is, uh, compensation is over seventy-five thousand dollars. So you can see the positions, um, it doesn't require names, um, positions, their insurance, um, and different benefits. And this is, um, and then if they have vacation, sick days as well. Questions on that?
Great. Okay, and then the next item is the presentation of Salary Compensation Report for all employees.
This one is not required by ISBE, um, but the Board had asked for it, um, several years ago when we began presenting this. The Board asked, um, that we just, since we have to do some employees, they asked for us to share that information for all employees. So that's what this, um, report is. Any questions?
Thank you, Kim. Um, Kim, yeah, this is all updated with the current contracts as this?
No, this, um, it's updated as to what we have right now. We have not, um, uh, this, it was what was, has been already paid. We haven't done the retro.
Oh, retro.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kim?
Okay, great.
The next item on the agenda is the update on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Okay, um, as we've been doing, uh, for quite a long time now, I'd like to give the Board an update on where we're at, um, in terms of the pandemic and, and how we're doing as a district. Um, and I do, again, in case this is the first time, there are individuals who are watching our board meeting, I do want to review some of the information. I know the Board has seen this several times. But again, uh, just our guiding principles and, and always the health and safety of our students is first and foremost. And then this year, in addition to that, is making sure that we're able to stay in person full-time. Um, we have been, you know, we haven't had a situation where we've had to flip to remote. So a little bit different this year. That's with the, um, approval of the Page County Health Department. It's something that independently, we cannot make that decision, but we have, it has to be in conjunction with the Health Department. Uh, we're focused on, uh, making sure that we have, um, meaningful and engaging academic experiences. We're focused on the social emotional learning of our students. Um, we want a consistent learning model for our students and staff. And then we're always, um, providing professional learning opportunities, uh, for our staff. Uh, right now, we are currently still at a high level of transmission. Um, yesterday afternoon, uh, the Page County Health Department met with all the superintendents in Page County, uh, virtually. They're anticipating that this will get lowered to substantial. They're seeing the numbers stabilizing in the county. Um, what's pushing us over is the new cases for a hundred thousand. They are seeing that decrease and leveling off. So they're anticipating within a week or so that we'll be at a substantial level and will no longer be at a high level. and will no longer be at a high level. As of last Friday, Page County was averaging the seven day average, 133 new cases per 100,000 and the positivity rate was 3.11%. For our local community, again, this is last Friday, our seven day averages. You can see where the positivity rates are. Westmont is right now under 3% and our new cases per 100,000 are 85. Our neighboring communities, and we do draw some students from Downers Grove and Clarendon Hills. They're a little bit over 4% and the case of Hinsdale, 5%. And then all their new cases per 100,000 are over 100. And so the average for our local community is a 4.13% positivity rate and 132 new cases per 100,000. In terms of our actual COVID data, what we're experiencing in our buildings, since our last board meeting, we did have a staff member test positive for COVID unvaccinated. So since the beginning of the school year, we've had two employees, one that was vaccinated, one unvaccinated. Those are certified staff and we haven't had any non-certified staff test positive for COVID. Right now, we're sitting at approximately 30 staff members who are not vaccinated. We've had no compliance issues. All of our unvaccinated staff are supplying us with a negative test at the beginning of each week. So we're not experiencing any issues with compliance on that issue. For our students, you can see kind of where we're at. Again, we're, you know, we're still, if a student has COVID like symptoms, they need to go home along with their siblings. And so you can see what the numbers were since September 9th. And, you know, at Manning, it's one of the larger buildings we have in the district. There was 39 since our last board meeting, Miller is 28, the junior high is 41, the high school is 28. We do expect the high school to be a little bit lower because those students are eligible for the vaccine. And we're going to be collecting that data to find out what percent is vaccinated. Since our last board meeting, we had one student test positive for COVID. And then you can see where we're at year to date for each of the buildings. So again, our numbers are not alarming. And again, in terms of defining an outbreak, that comes from the Page County Health Department. Anytime we are aware of a student testing positive, we share that information with the county Health Department. So they're monitoring our schools as well. And they would notify us if they think we needed to take any action as a result of positive cases. Again, we're all using the CDC transmission levels. And again, right now, we're at that high level of transmission. It's not our positivity rate, but it's the new cases per 100,000. The Page County Health Department, as I mentioned earlier, is anticipating us moving to substantial at the, in a week or so. And well, hopefully that will, will come through. I think this is, I went back and there we go. There we go, all right. Currently, we still again are under a mask mandate, executive order. There's been some rumor that the governor may be taking a look at that as the numbers level off. And so if he lifts that mandate, then, you know, I'll bring that information to the board and we may need to make it some decisions as a district. The physical distancing this year is three feet. Masks are required on buses as well. And contact tracing is for, a close contact is defined as 15 minutes, less than three feet. And that's what we're, and if you notice on the prior data, we've been fortunate, we haven't had any close contacts with any of our positive cases. And again, if you, you know, we know there's some districts not in the local area who are trying to go their own way and not adhere to the governor's executive orders. But schools run the risk of being put on probation, losing their accreditation. You're not able to participate in the I T S A, N I S A state series. The state board of ed would not recognize school diplomas and potentially loss of funding. There was some discussion if the state board of ed could have these consequences for school districts. And the, what the state board of ed was advised was rather than having guidelines, they need to establish rules for schools. They have established rules for school districts and so now they can have enforceable consequences. When there are guidelines, there was a question if they could be enforced. But now that they've created the rules, they are enforceable. I know we've had some discussion about the test to stay. Right now, I can tell you Shield, they're overwhelmed and it's really taking them a long time to get into school districts. I've gotten information on a couple other testing companies that we're looking into. And again, we wouldn't really be looking at the test to stay because that's something the Page County Health Department is not recognizing. We'd be looking at it more as a service for our families. If their child has symptoms, we'd be able to provide the testing versus them going outside. My understanding is some, you know, tests right now are difficult sometimes to get. And there's also a delay in getting the results back right now. Whereas before you could get them in 24 hours, now it's taken up to three days in some cases to get those test results back. So we are still working on that, on that piece. And just some reminders, and I try to include this in our parent updates as well. But we do require if a student has symptoms, it's a doctor's note that they have to be seen by a doctor who signs off and says, yes, this is seasonal allergies and something other than COVID or negative PCR test. The close contact we talked about is the three feet for 15 minutes. If they're unmasked, it's, it's less than six feet for 15 minutes. And then quarantine unvaccinated persons who test positive. Quarantine for 14 days, unvaccinated persons, close contact, quarantine 10 to 14 days. But the 10 days requires something from the Page County Health Department indicating that they've been released from quarantine. So we require that and a negative PCR test. If a vaccinated, vaccinated person has a close contact, they need to have a negative test three to five days after that close contact to confirm that they're not positive for COVID. And then just a couple of reminders, you know, the crossing guards, again, we're working with the village. We're also working with them if, in the event that the crossing guard is absent, if they could notify the school district so that we can get information out to our parents. That's going to be important. Transportation has improved, the buses in the last week have been running on time. Of course, that's because their drivers have been healthy and have been able to run the routes. Again, if we run into a situation where a driver comes off sick, they don't have the sub drivers. But again, they'll relay that information to us and we'll get it to our parents as quickly as possible so that they, they're aware of that situation. But the busing has improved over the last week. So that was good to see. Are there any questions?
So Kevin, on the crossing guard situation, when there is, I mean, I know we have a couple of main intersections that the village has basically always covered. And if there is a situation where a crossing guard isn't available, is the village then supplying a backfill for that? Or I know you said we're working with them to be notified, but is it then their responsibility to essentially provide some sort of coverage for those intersections if, for whatever reason?
Right. Typically, you know, prior to this year, if a crossing guard was ill, any friend would supply a substitute crossing guard so they would continue filling the position. But again, like a lot of businesses right now, a lot of services, they're just trying to fill the normal post and then have a pool of subs. And so right now, they're limited with their subs. But when they can, they provide a sub. But we're, what we need is if they can't provide the sub, we need to be notified so we can let our, our school families know.
Right, and I mean, I guess like the police department's sort of monitoring things. What are the, what are our other options with the village to support? You know, if there are intersections that are being left unmanned because?
You know, again, it's difficult for like the Westmont Police Department to cover because if they get called, then they have to leave the post. I believe that's one of the things we're going to be discussing. We have a meeting set up Thursday with the mayor and Steve May, the village manager.
Yeah.
And so I believe that's part of the conversation that they want to discuss.
Just for the rest of the board's information, Kevin and myself will be meeting with Steve May and the mayor on Thursday morning. So we can discuss it further there. Okay.
Quick question about that meeting, is that meeting expressly to discuss crossing guards or is there other, is there other content?
I believe part of it is to discuss, you know, the, how the village can support the district and want, you know, crossing guards. But then also, one of the things that the village wants to set up is a joint meeting between the school board and the village board. And so that's part of that conversation as well, setting up that meeting.
That's, that's good to hear.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Is the district doing any kind of study on this crossing guard issue? I thought we had talked about that at one point.
We're, we're collecting the data. We said we want to have it at this meeting, but we are, we are looking at the.
As long as you're doing it.
Yes.
Okay. And then one other question, what's the latest you've heard with, for vaccines for younger kids?
Well, the deadline keeps, keeps changing. I've heard as late as December and then I've heard that it could still happen in October. I believe visor is the closest being approved.
They submitted today, but they didn't ask for emergency.
Okay.
They didn't ask for an emergency on it.
And then Moderna is slightly behind, Johnson and Johnson's behind that. So, you know, we're hopeful that it will get approved and then our younger students will be eligible. But the latest I heard is December.
Thank you.
And then don't forget, it's still, well, I've also heard that now they're saying you can take, I don't know, Deena, if you know this, you can take both doses. You don't have to wait the 14 days between doses.
I've heard both, like it can be longer, you know, it doesn't have to be so strict. With the 14, it can, it can be extended.
Right.
They're also, you know, trying to deal with the amount, the dosage amount for children and maybe half what's given to adults. So I think they're working all of that out.
And, and then if, if they do it the same way as the adults, it's 28 days before you're fully vaccinated because of the 14 days between shots, 14 days before you're fully vaccinated. So we're hoping that we can start the process soon.
I have questions, a couple of questions. One for you is looking towards the future and what's coming down the line as if we, numbers are going as predicted as far as recommendations. Are the superintendents talking about a plan or is the IDPH going to develop recommendations or I guess guidelines of what they're, they're going to advise school districts to do at that point? Has any, any thought of that process?
There hasn't been discussion yet at the superintendent level. Typically, what happens is that the IDPH, they develop the guidelines for schools and then that gets filtered through the state board of ed and then to the school district. So I'm anticipating that if we do continue to see the leveling off and the, we start to transition from high to substantial to moderate, that we'll receive some guidance, guidance from the Health Department.
Just kind of looking forward or trying to plan and predict. I guess our planning process of what's going to be asked of the board when, if and when the mandate is lifted by the governor and what we're expected to do then.
Right, and we already had some preliminary conversations, you know, at least around the masking, you know. And so as soon as the governor lifts his executive order, I'm pretty sure then there'll be, start to be discussions about, okay, what does this mean for schools? And then I'll be able to bring that information to the board.
And then my other question is more so to get, I guess, if there are no other questions for you, it's just asking the board, I guess, discussion of their thoughts for, for the district testing. You kind of made, you made the statement about the tests to stay and how that's not supported by the Page Health Department. So what of, what are our feelings about testing in our district? Is that something that we want Kevin to look into other companies that could help in supplies with testing? Is that something, you know, we should pursue with all the other things that we have to, to do? I just wanted to get the, I want to have some discussion with that from the board.
Did you say?
Just so we can instruct you.
I think you said you were looking for other.
Yeah, we've been, we've been, I have been looking at it. Originally, Shield seemed promising, but the onboarding process is taking a lot longer than anticipated and they're really having a hard time, you know, servicing the districts they're currently with. So then superintendents were talking about other entities they're going with that are opportunities for us. So it's something that we're looking into, but obviously it'd be something that I would bring to the board for approval before we would implement that.
It's something I support and I think is a great idea. They've had several webinars on districts in the area that have implemented a great program that serves the community and the students. And I think it's something that we could use. But on the other side, if it's not, you know, then it's something we don't want to, I don't want to kind of waste your.
Right, right.
Time with the research if that's not something.
I, I think it would be beneficial, again, the test to stay, you know, even our attorney says until the Page County Health Department is going to sign off on it, they, they wouldn't recommend it. But I think, you know, for some of our families who might be struggling to get a test, rather than keeping their child out an extended period of time, if we can get that child back sooner, I think it's worth our while to, to do it.
That makes sense.
I want to go just back to the crossing guard thing real quick. I want to make sure I understand that, so the plan is meeting with you this Thursday in the village. And then is there, is it, there's talk of a meeting, a meeting between the board, the two boards? Or is, that is the plan, there is going to be a meeting between the two boards, which I'm not sure if I understood it.
My conversation with Steve May is they've already been able to, they're, they're trying to do this with the different taxing bodies, library board, park district. And they've been able to do it with those other entities. They understand that we're a little bit more complex, especially starting the school year and those types of things. So they're trying to give us a little breathing time. But it's something that is a priority for the village is to have a joint meeting with the school board.
Okay. I mention it because, you know, you can pick up, quote unquote, pick up the newspaper. I don't know if anyone picks up the newspaper anymore. You can read about, all over the country, everyone's struggling with the issue. And a lot of school boards have gotten very creative in the way they've managed this issue, whether it's bus drivers or crossing guards. And it's, again, it's everywhere. I would love for the administration to bring before us, even if it's asking for more money or whatever it is, but bring us a solution. We, we spent some time in some other meetings talking, you know, spitballing ideas, but that's not really what our role is.
Right, right.
You know, our role is to say yay or nay to proposals from the administration. So, yeah, I know we've said it before, but I, I feel I have the need to say it again. And that is, things are tough all over, isn't a solution. So.
Right.
Sure, yes.
And just for clarity, I think it's important, the meeting on Thursday is not exclusively, nor was it prompted by the crossing guard issue. The meeting on Thursday was prompted by a desire to have greater collaboration.
Cooperation and coordination.
Right, and so the crossing guard issue is one component of that. And, and I believe in our last meeting, we asked for an assessment on the situation in total. I know we were talking a lot about busing, but I think everybody is assuming crossing guards are also going to be discussed as a part of the, like here's the situation and then here's some potential solutions. Is that, is that a safe assumption or are we?
Yeah, that's a safe assumption.
Yeah, okay. So the, and we're thinking for next meeting, is that when we decided?
Yeah, we're hoping to have it for, for next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because I totally agree with you, Carlos, it is not.
No good solutions.
We are not the, we are not the people to be brainstorming it and coming up with solutions, but.
What I mean is no, no good solutions are going to come. What I mean is, no good solutions are going to come from us. We need a solution tomorrow.
Yeah.
We got to, there's, there's lots of factors, and I, and I get that, but it will get cold, and it will get worse, and it will get more dangerous.
Absolutely.
And, and this is, this is, the clock's ticking.
Yep.
So.
Any other questions for Kevin on the school year? All right, great. Okay, we're going to move into action items. The first action item is the adoption of the 2021-2022 budget. The chair will entertain a motion, whereas the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number 201, County of DePage, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared in tentative form of a budget, and the secretary of this board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. And whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 28th day of September 2021, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section 1, that the fiscal year of this school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 2021 and June 30th, 2022. Section 2, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for the said fiscal year. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Steckety.
Yes.
Okay, number two, approval of board agreements. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board agreements as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Steckety.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Number four, destruction of verbatim closed session minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board action on closed session minutes as presented.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Steckety.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Number four, destruction of verbatim closed session minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the destruction of the verbatim closed session minutes from September 2019 through February 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Steckety.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Okay, that's all of our action items. Kevin, do you have the superintendent's report for us?
Yes, I have a couple items in my report. First of all, this week, Westmont High School was named a 2021 Blue Ribbon School by U.S. Department of Education. Westmont High School is being recognized as an exemplary high-performing school. What's unique about this award is this is not something a school can apply for on their own, they have to be invited to be, to apply based upon a consistent, consistency of excellence. And so the, this is a credit to the hard-working administration staff and students at Westmont High School and also our entire school community, so congratulations to our high school. The high school will be here on the October 26 board meeting to share information with the board, and we can recognize the high school then, and then November 4th and 5th, representatives from the high school will be in Washington, D.C., being officially recognized.
Amazing.
At our next board meeting, October 12th, Manning Elementary School will be presenting. They want to present on their new STEM program, so they want to share information about that. And that's one of the nice things about being organized as a 2 through 5 building is where the resources were in use, and so we never had a STEM program at the elementary level, and now we're able to have a STEM program. And then the last item I have is our elementary future planning. We had a committee work over the summer and looked at different options for the district for how to best meet the needs of our students long-term. And so we're going to be having community informational meetings on Tuesday, October 5th, and Thursday, October 14th, from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock PM at the high school auditorium. And we'll present the work of the elementary task force to our community. We're hoping to get a wide range of community members there so they can ask clarifying questions. And then after we have those meetings, then we'll be surveying our community as well and getting their input, but we wanted the opportunity to at least present the information so that those who want that information make an informed decision. And then we're still on target to, at our November board meeting, to present to the board the outcome of that task force and the feedback we've gotten from our various stakeholders.
Great. Kevin, are those meetings going to be recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we're going to record those, and then we'll post those on our website.
How are we notifying the public beyond the school district to, that the meetings will be available?
We're, we're working on that piece, but we're, we are utilizing social media.
Okay.
And then we're reaching out to the village if they'll, will, will post the meetings for us as well. So we're hoping to get as many announcements out there as we can.
What is the date again of the November meeting that we're?
The 16th, I believe.
16th, okay. Okay. Anything else, Kevin?
No, that's my report.
Okay.
It's going to come from there.
Do we have any board reports?
I know I emailed you guys, I just wanted to talk about those new whiteboards, the screens look amazing, so we made a good choice.
Yay!
Thanks to Nadine for knowing it was time, it like, Ms. Walsh was showing us, it's like barely a finger touch, and she was able to move and then go on the computer and move things around, so it was really, really nice to see that. So it likes, it's nice being in the building so you can see what we're saying yes or no to, you know? It was exciting. And then this Saturday is Custodians' Day.
Yay!
All our custodians across the district. You guys are really the backbone to the district. You keep us in order, you keep us together, you're keeping these kids germ-free the best you can, and I know a lot of custodians out there are really close with the kids, and the kids love seeing them, so, yeah, congrats, guys.
Definitely worth, worth recognizing for sure, and especially now. Thank you, Ange. Anybody else have a board report?
I just want to say it was really fun to see all the pictures on social media of the kids attending homecoming and, you know, having fun together, and it's just, it's great to see that sort of semblance of normalcy happening again this year, and just congratulations to the, the students and staff on a successful homecoming event.
Anybody else? All right, doesn't, any public comments? It's not look like it. And then we have future meetings and events. There's a SIP Day, early dismissal time for students tomorrow, September 29th, 2021. College Information and Financial Aid Night will be done virtually tomorrow, September 29th, 2021. The elementary PTO and committee meeting is October 4th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And then our next school board meeting is October 12th at 6:00 PM at Village Hall. And we have finished closed sessions, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.